Good afternoon and welcome to the April 20, 2015 study session. We need to recognize we have a couple council members that are not with us. Councilmember Richens and Thompson will both be absent from this meeting and the formal council meeting upstairs. Mr. Kavanaugh I know is on his, is en route and hopes to join us prior to the beginning of the meeting upstairs. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting. We did this a few days ago and at this point, everything is on the consent agenda, but let's make sure that remains the case. Councilmembers, any concerns about Agenda Item 3, taking action on purchasing contracts? Agenda Item 4 are several city resolutions.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brady.
As part of the process with the notification about HUD funding, we also received comments from the public and we have received some. So at some point, maybe at the end of the agenda, we'd like to invite Tammy Albright to come forward to give you a summary of the comments that were received on these items.
Okay, thank you. I see Agenda Item 4 references several HUD contracts. Would it be fair, or is that all of Agenda Item 4? Or I guess it's just down?
Down to about 4...
Yeah, about 4I or so, 4J.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll invite Tammy Albright to come up right after this then. Okay, council, any questions concerning Agenda Item 5, which would be introduction of ordinances related to some zoning cases? And then Item 6 would be taking action on ordinances that have previously been introduced. Okay, so it appears that upstairs, everything remains on the consent agenda. Mr. Brady, would now be a good time for us to hear from Tammy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
Welcome.
Basically, we wanted to give you an update because our public comment period just ended last Thursday. So as part of the plans that we would submit to HUD, what is required is all the public comments to be put into an appendix and attached to the submittal, and they do need to be addressed. Most of the comments we, or some of the comments we got were wordsmithing, where they wanted something to be stated stronger, say for economic development, or something like that. We made those changes. However, as towards the end of last week, we started to get quite a flood of West Mesa residents indicating that they had some concern with the amount of affordable housing in West Mesa. Most of them had, the general theme was that while they weren't, they would support rehab of housing that was already there, they didn't want to see new units. And we just wanted to make sure that we explained what we did is we did not incorporate those into the five-year consolidated plan. Basically, that level of detail and, you know, to analyze the community from one spot to another and get into policy and implementation strategies, that's more of a housing plan. And Mesa's housing plan is out of date, and you will be seeing in the next funding cycle a request from staff to put some funding away so that we can engage the community and put together a group to start to put that level of detail to a housing plan moving forward. However, part of what you are, would be approving tonight does include the annual action plan for the funding of 2015-16. And council did approve three affordable housing projects. While La Masita and El Rancho are teardowns and rebuilds, they will be adding units. Legacy on Main is completely rehab. It's no additional units. But we wanted to make sure that you're aware that we got all those comments and kind of where we were and what you would be approving. Furthermore, we did put both maps for the CDBG target area out there for public comments. We did not receive any comments on the map, but staff has recommended as part of the resolutions that you're looking at tonight, that we do the Main Street corridor as our CDBG target area. We felt that with those type of comments, having the corridor be our target area will further help to decentralize that affordable housing in West Mesa. So we thought that was, you know, with those comments coming in, that's something else we could do. And one of the others, the analysis of impediments was also attached to it, and one of the recommendations is we do need to strengthen our fair housing efforts, especially education-wise. Part of staff is working on an educational piece to try to target landlords in East Mesa to, and encourage them to participate in our Section 8 housing. That could also help further that deconcentration that the residents fill in that area was happening. They also wanted to see more homeownership programs. That's already outlined in our consolidated plan. Again, the consolidated plan's very high level. Once we get into the details, that's your annual plan. So we just kind of wanted to update you so you knew what was, what those resolutions would be approving and what we would be submitting to HUD.
So if I understand what you just told me, which is that we did get a lot of comments, and those comments really would be more relevant to updating our housing plan rather than responsive to the particular issues that are being funded according to these resolutions. And it seems like maybe we ought to communicate that. It sounds like it's on our radar to update our housing plan.
Yes.
And do we have a timeline for that?
The next funding cycle, staff will probably be carving out an estimated amount for, to hire a consultant to get that updated for over the next year. So probably within a year or so. But we'll have to, the whole, we have to go out through the whole RFP process, then we have to hire someone, and then we want them to do the same kind of community engagement. In fact, having a steering committee with community members to start ferreting out all of those kind of issues in the different parts of Mesa. So that, we have an existing plan, but it, it was done before we even were talking light rail. So it definitely needs to be updated.
Okay. I agree that we ought to have an updated housing plan, and it seems like the sooner we, if we can accelerate that, the better so that we can let these folks know that responded to our request for comments, that your comments are important and relevant, but not to this specific topic. We invite you to engage in the housing plan that is on the horizon, right?
And Mayor, I, Mayor, I think you also, or Tammy mentioned also, I think it's relevant that the map that was included, as I recall from memory, allows a broader opportunity for other affordable housing projects than maybe more of a concentrated on the west side of the community. Is, am I saying that correctly?
The map would just make the CDBG target area all of, of Main Street corridor.
Right, but it spreads it out much wider band than we have today.
Right.
So that may go a little bit to giving options for proposals, proposals for affordable housing in the future?
The, the housing tax credit project is driven by the states.
Right.
And the state has, gives them extra points for being within a half mile of the light rail. So as the light rail moves out, we'll start to see those follow it out.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I'm only one voice on the council, but I think the sooner we get the housing, the updated housing plan in motion, the better. Because with the light rail arriving, we need to have a plan. Yeah. I see some heads nodding. Okay. All right, thank you, Tammy.
Sure.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the fiscal year 1516 budget. Candace, our budget director, we welcome you.
Thank you. And I know that we're a little short on time this evening, and I want to make sure that we're able to get to our two department presentations. We have both Transit and the Police Department up today. So I am probably going to go a little bit quicker through these than I had originally intended. So please, if you have any questions along the way, please stop me and make sure that we ask those questions and get those things addressed. For the first, so the first two slides, I'm going to kind of go a little fast through, and then we'll get to, I want to make sure we get to the, the numbers and so forth for you. But kind of the goal of the budget is to ensure the effective and efficient use of resources in order to sustain the delivery of quality services for the residents of Mesa. So anytime we're looking at the budget or the budget process, these are the types of things that we keep in mind. And that's focusing on the community needs and priorities, improving our programs' efficiency and effectiveness, focusing on the outcomes and the results, and promoting communication, and then, and of course, ensuring sustainability of our programs through the years. Some of the areas of emphasis for 1516, and we had kind of discussed a little bit before, I do want to draw attention to a couple of the items here. We've always talked about financial sustainability, making sure that over the course of years, we're able to provide these services. But one thing we do want to talk about tonight is competitive compensation for our quality workforce. So over the last year, there was a market salary survey that was conducted, looking at our positions here in the City of Mesa, comparing those to other local municipalities in the valley, to make sure that we are competitive in our salaries, that we're able to recruit those quality employees and retain those quality and excellent employees as well. Some of the output or outcome of that particular survey showed that we were deficient in some of our positions, and that we were actually under the market when it come to competitive salaries. Those have been advanced to the Human Resources Department, and they are currently implementing those changes to try to bring us up to the market comparability with other municipalities. So those are being done this year and are included in all projections going forward. Some of the other things that you'll see coming forward is we look through the departments and economic development. We are focusing on the marketing areas that we have talked about previously. Those things like the downtown Mesa that we keep coming up and talking about different plans and so forth, making sure that we have marketing opportunities there, as well as the Falcon Field development area. We want to make sure that we have funds available in our Economic Development Department to ensure that we have the capacity to market in those particular areas. Public safety, we talked about a little bit. I'm going to kind of pass over that today because we have police coming up, and I'm sure they'll be happy to talk to you about that. And fires coming, Fire and Medical will be coming on Thursday, and so they can update you with that as well. Stormwater infrastructure, we talked a little bit, that's included in our capital improvement program. Those were some projects that we are leveraging county funds to be able to go forward with those projects. And last week, we talked with you a little bit about our utility services and trying to align our water structure with the demand on those particular services. So those are included in the 1516 budget. Just to give you a high-level overview when we're talking about our budget, last week we talked about our focus was on our enterprise fund, which is a considerable portion of our budget. Today, we'd like to talk about the general governmental side of that budget and where that comes from. A lot of questions that we receive is you have a $1.34 billion budget. So when we're talking about reductions that we need or services that we want to provide, can't we find money within that $1.34 billion budget to provide those? Of that $1.34 billion, it comes from very different sources. These are different sources of revenues that we have available to the city. Some of those resources or revenues are actually restricted in their use, so they cannot be used for general governmental purposes. The main, the largest ones are our bond proceeds, that is actually our debt service that we use to fund our capital improvement program projects. Other items are things like Falcon Field revenues that need to be reinvested back into the Falcon Field Airport, and also grant revenues that we receive. And those are limited just to those particular grant applications that we submitted for use of those grants. So when we take out the restricted revenues, what that leaves us is our unrestricted, or what we tend to term our general governmental resources. So for the current fiscal year budget, we had about $375 million that was available in resources in order to fund general governmental activities. And you can kind of see where those come from here, our main sources, and we've talked about this previously, but our main sources are our sales and use tax, that's our local sales tax, intergovernmental funds, those are our state shared revenues that we talk about, that includes income tax, state shared sales tax, and then licensing fees for vehicles. And then the transfer from the enterprise fund. So that comprises the three main areas of revenues or resources for general governmental We discussed where we were a little bit back in February, but I wanted to give you just a quick update. There was one error on the slide back in February, so the one number that you see that is different for the 1516 forecast is the enterprise transfer number at $99.7 million for 1516. That was an error on the February slide, and I apologize for that. What this is really showing is kind of our, where our revenues are, how they're increasing. We're looking at a change, an estimated change between 1213 and, excuse me, 1314 and 1415 of about 3.7% growth in those revenues, and a 3.2% is currently being projected for 1516. When we look at the expenses that are related to the general governmental area by department, and we take that $375 million and split it out into where that's actually being applied or allocated to, we can see that public safety comprises about 63% of all of those funds, and then followed by parks, library and culture, and our community development and outreach area. And then all of the other general kind of administrative areas combined over there. When we look forward to 1516, we really don't see a major change in this going forward based on the proposed budget that we have, that we'll be doing, reviewing over this next month. We see that's going to be probably about the same. Our preliminary numbers show that we'll still be about that 63% on public safety. So as we look at this, the public safety is really, as you can see, based on being about 63% of the general governmental expenses, is the driving force behind increases in cost. Anything that changes in public safety obviously affects our overall cost for the general fund. And as we're, what we showed here, and this is a difference, so if you did look at the presentation over the weekend, we have changed this slide out to try to simplify it a little bit more than the slide that was originally in the presentation. So you might see a difference there. Try to simplify this a little bit, just showing just the public safety departments. So this would be Fire and Medical, the Police Department, and Municipal Court. And what we've seen in the changes to their budget, so you can see, in going into the 1415 fiscal year, we were over a 7% increase in the expenditure budget that we had for them. And then going into 1516, after applying the pension phase-in that was discussed with you previously, so we have about $3.7 million in avoided costs, if you will. So it's not savings from our original budget, but costs we're not going to have by phasing into those rates. And then also applying budget reductions, as discussed with the different departments, we're going to show a growth of just under that 3%, which will be between the 2 and 3% growth in their budget still. So the public safety departments are still growing, but based on the reductions and the adjustments that we are proposing for 1516, we're keeping it in, more in level with where we're seeing our revenues grow at. If we had not made any adjustments to the 1516 budget, we would still be about just over the 6% growth in public safety departments, but while looking at a 3.2% growth in our When we look at the general governmental area, one thing to remember that, City of Mesa, we are a service organization, and that means we rely on our employees to provide those services. So personal services is actually 74% of all the expenses we have budgeted in our general governmental area. This graph, I'm sure you're probably getting tired of seeing, because I keep bringing it to you over and over again, but this is really what we're, this is what we all pull it together. We pull together what our resources are going forward and what we anticipate our expenses will be going forward to continue to provide the same services we're providing today. And what we're looking at for the 1516 fiscal year is really that first step in kind of a two-year process of realigning our resources with our expenses. How we did that for going forward, what were our budget strategies going into the fiscal year 1516? One of the budget strategies that we mentioned during our capital improvement program overview was the identification of some parks projects that have not started design or construction yet. So we're able to actually place them on hold at this time while we look for available funding to make sure that it's available on an ongoing basis, so we can maintain those at the quality that we need to maintain those at. And that's been included or not included in the 1516 budget. Some of the public safety ones we've talked about, so I'm going to kind of glide over this slide a little bit, and I'll let the, just to let the Police Department kind of talk about their positions and inactivating some positions that have been historically vacant, and how we're going to absorb and deal with those, as well as the Fire and Medical Department. I do need to make a note on Fire and Medical. We have done, been doing continuous conversations with our departments as always, and the Fire Department and Medical Department have identified alternate reductions to the three positions at Falcon Field. And so they'll be discussing those on Thursday. So that is a change from the budget summary that was submitted. So we'll have additional information for you Thursday morning regarding those. It'll be the same dollar amount, but it'll just be comprised of different reductions. Looking at overall and general governmental positions, 50 and a half positions or 50.5 full-time equivalents have been identified for inactivation in our 1516 fiscal year in total. That's public safety and non-public safety combined. Of all of those positions, all but three of those are either currently vacant or will be vacant by July 1. Three of the positions that are currently filled and will remain filled are in the Business Services Department, and they are more related to the state taking over the sales tax administration and collection rather than the actual budget exercise. And so we'll be maintaining those positions at least through January of 2016, when at that point, the duties will be transferred over to the state. And we do have the funding in the 1516 budget to maintain those positions for half of the year.
So would those, the individuals occupying those three positions would then be reassigned somewhere within the city, or is it anticipated there'll be some layoffs related to this?
Normally, anytime we're looking at positions that are filled and we have dates where the position will go away, the department works with the Human Resources Department to try to find alternate positions for those employees and work with them to try to place them, if possible.
But Mayor, they will be given a notice that their position's been eliminated, and there's a formal process which we go through for our reduction in workforce. So I mean, we, we will try to place them, but they, they'll be noticed, notified that there will be a reduction in force.
Okay.
And we're scheduled right now, the current schedule calls for Business Services to come back with you on May 4 and do a more comprehensive review of that sales tax process, where we, where we are with the state and what we are looking at going forward, including all of the various costs that are coming back to us as well, for the privilege of having them to collect our sales tax on our behalf. For 1516, the 1516 proposed budget does include very limited increases. In the Police Department, we are going into the second year of a three-year contract for the Axon body cameras, and so we do have some funds in there for the one-time purchase and also the ongoing operations needed for the data storage of those particular ones. In Business Services, we have identified through that sales tax, moving the duties over to the state. The state will be charging us a one-time fee of $334,000 is the latest estimate for the upgrade of their system in order to handle our transactions, and then an ongoing $954,000 for not only the sales tax, but also the other administrative duties that they provide on, on our behalf. And again, we'll be coming back on May 4 with a more comprehensive review of that, of that program and up-to-date need for that. Fire-related, we have our VHF radio upgrade project that has been added to our capital improvement program, so it was not included in the capital improvement program overview that we gave to you earlier, and that has been added. Mesa's share of that is $675,000 for fiscal year 1516. It's actually a $900,000 project in 1516, followed by another $900,000 the following year, and $500,000 the third year. So it's a three-year project. Mesa is the lead on that, so we'll be showing the full budget within our capital improvement program, but our portion of the first year is $675,000. And the facility maintenance is one of our other areas that had a large increase in their custodial contract. It was about a $400,000 increase. That's not all general fund, it's for all facilities, all buildings, so a portion of that would affect the general fund. Coming down to the end, when we're looking at our reserve balances, our financial policies call for us to keep our reserve balances within the 8% to 10% range. That is 8% to 10% of the following year's expected operational budget. If you look for our forecast for 1516, we are within that 8% to 10% range. What is also of note, though, is when you look at our net sources and uses line, right there, kind of in the middle, you'll need to see about a negative $7.5 million. That, what that means is that we are still relying on our reserves in order to fund our operational items and one-time items. And so that's what we're looking at right now. So that's why when we're talking, we're talking about, this is one year in a two-year process to try to align our resources with our expenses. And so we used to be much higher than the 7.5, so we've dropped it down to that $7.5 million number.
Candace, that means there's more work to do next year.
That's correct. So that means there's more work to do next year, although we won't be waiting until next year. Obviously, again, the budget process is not a one-time or once-a-year process. This is something that we do basically on a monthly basis, where we're looking at our revenues and our resources, always forecasting where we think we're going to be, any effects that legislation may have on our resources, any effects the economy may have on our resources, as well as our expenditures. Looking at our lifecycle plans and our infrastructure plans, those are some of the things that we have not been able to address in the 1516 budget, is any type of an increase or revisit of our lifecycle and infrastructure plans. One of the other things that we have not accounted for in this particular forecast, oh, sorry.
So if we get more tax revenues, then that improves the forecast, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But this is anticipating, I think it was a 3.5% increase?
Yeah, so it's more, it's additional revenues above and beyond what we forecasted.
Above and beyond the forecast.
And our forecast is 3.2?
We're at 3.2% increase on general governmental resources.
So if anything above that would go towards opening this number?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. And what we'd like to do is, the other thing that's not included in this is, we've, you know, you hear a lot of talk about the mid-decade census. And one thing we have not done is, is we have not made any adjustments to the forecast at this time in either direction, either participating or not participating in the mid-decade census. And we'll have to revisit that as more information becomes available on how that may or may not affect going forward in our forecast for those. One thing I would, would like to point out, that is good news, like to end on good news, right, is our forecast for 1415, again, if you look at that net sources and uses number, and it looks really bad, right, because it looks like it's a negative $11 million. We had $11.9 million in carryover items. What that means is those were items that were budgeted in 1314 originally and just not received by the end of the year. So the revenues were already identified, we had to move the expenses to 1415. So if you were to actually back those out, we, our revenues and our expenses are expected to net to each other in 1415. So the departments did a very good job at looking at their departments and making sure they were saving whenever possible, so we could put that into that year-end projection to make sure that we were coming in. Even though our revenues are expected to come in $6 million less, our departments reacted and were able to bring their expenses down. Now that means we've gone without some one-time items, and that would affect our lifecycle and so forth. But in 1415, we're actually made some really good progress.
Yeah, so Mayor, council, you, sometimes, you may have heard we had to make adjustments mid-year, and so that's what happened.
Yes.
We say reacted, but we did it with a purpose. We went to the, seeing when we saw that our revenues were not going to meet expectations, we were about at $6 million?
It was about $6 million below expected budget for revenues.
Budget, so we had, we went to the departments and began making some budget adjustments mid-year. And so we made those, and that helped us then to essentially net even with resources and expenses by the end of the year. So it was a good response by the departments to help us get there going forward. So the number you see here is just, again, the carryover expenses from a prior year, but those were already accounted for in the revenue.
They're already accounted for in our revenues for 1314.
Okay, thank you.
And so that's why you see the ending reserve balance actually go up at the end of 1314, it's up to that 15%. It's because it has $11 million of revenues with no expenses on the other side. The expenses were moved to 1415, and then you see it drop back down. So over this next few, we have, these are the departments that are currently scheduled to discuss their department budgets or program budgets with you over the next, over the next month. If there are other items that you do not see here that you'd like additional information or additional information based on the proposed budget summary that was distributed to you, please let me know, and we'll make sure we either schedule those or get you the information that you're looking for.
Now Candace, we do, we will be coming back to council on a discussion on utility rates based on the conversation we had.
Yes, so we're continuing to work on that.
But it'll fit, it will fit that somewhere in the schedule.
Yes, that's not, it's not scheduled at this time, so we know we have a, for that. And then we'll also be coming back at the end of all of the budget discussions, of the department discussions, to kind of tally up or summarize any feedback or direction that we see from council during those discussions, and also kind of summarize you with some more concrete numbers of what you'll be looking at going forward. Right now, we're just focused on what the differences are between the 1516, 1415 budget and the 1516 budget. So we'll be coming back and kind of summarize those all for you at the end of the discussions.
Great, and I'm sorry, any, council, any questions, concerns about this? So we're in year two of a three-year phase-in where we kind of phase out the drawing down of our reserve account. At the end of this year, we'll be about 9.7, I guess, the following year.
Yes, right.
Our, the benchmark or the basement we want to get, stay above, I believe is 8%. Is that what?
Yeah, between 8 and 10.
8 and 10.
Correct. And we always want our reserve balance to be above 8%. That includes not just the budget, but the actual. So that's why we focus every month to make sure that we are going to hit that at the end of the year. And that would help on our bond rating, which helps on our debt service. debt service and our interest at the end of cycles back and helps on our operations, so it's kind of a full circle.
So instead of trying to do this on one year, Mayor, we've come up with a kind of a glide-in, so next year, we're hoping to see maybe more revenues ahead of what we scheduled, but we also have to hold open the option that we have to look to be a little more efficient and find a few more opportunities to stretch the dollar. So that's, so there's a little more work to be done next year, but that's why we wanted to kind of manage this over a period of time.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Candace. If there's nothing else, the next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the fiscal year 1516 budgets for transit services and the Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council, I'm Jody Sorell, I'm the Transit Services Director. I just wanted to kind of go through our budget this year for you. Some of the accomplishments we had in 2014, or this last fiscal year, we had several big projects that are multi-year to get, to get things completed, and we completed our transit master plan, which will guide us in conjunction with the transit, transportation master plan and the general plan. So that's kind of our guide map, our roadmap for transit planning for the next 30 years. We also got the Transportation Program Advancement Notes Agreement signed and executed. That's a two-year, took us two years to get that contract, and I think it's taken longer to do the contract than it may take to build the project. That's for the Gilbert Road Light Rail construction project. And we also, just a few weeks ago, received the letter of no prejudice from the FTA on the Gilbert Road extension, which, that's important because it means we can get reimbursed our contribution back into the, into the program. This slide, the transit operations, the transit program is about a $22 million program, and this slide is important because one of the big chunks of money that we get to help support transit is Prop 400, the regional sales tax, and that funds 2/3 of our bus routes and a big portion of our dial-a-ride service. So that, I like to always make people aware of the benefits we reap from Prop 400. We also, the transit program, through light rail revenues, through Arizona Lottery funds, through different regional grants that go to Valley Metro that then come back to us to offset revenues, contribute, offset our costs, the general fund contribution by about $3.5 million. So in total, the city contributes about $8.4 million for transit, and that includes light rail operations, our fixed route bus, dial-a-ride, and our ride choice program. Just to kind of demonstrate, this is our budget, this is our budget categories, light rail, fixed route, and paratransit, those dollar amounts account for almost 90% of our budget, of what we contribute for service in the valley, or in Mesa. Those revenues are offset, these are the sources of the revenues, Arizona Lottery, light rail fares, light rail advertising, every time you see a light rail train wrapped, a portion of that money comes back to us. We get rental money, we have a, through the Central Mesa Project, we bought property that has a cell tower on it, so we get revenue back from that cell tower, back into the fund. There, our valley, 90% of our, as I said, 90% of our budget is dictated by Valley Metro estimates for that next service year. This shows what the Central Mesa Light Rail extension, the impact it has on them. We're going from about $1.6 million for a one-mile to $5 million for four miles. That's a big jump. The other big jump in our service was our dial-a-ride operations. Our dial-a-ride service, our ridership jumps by about, increases by about 8% to 10% a year, and every time that increases, you take that times about $22 a trip, it's a significant increase into our general fund. So this is an area, ride choice and the dial-a-ride and ride choice program is really an area we're going to work with Valley Metro to try to get some cost control and some recommendations for how to better manage that service, better provide that service. When light rail opens up, on the good upside, when light rail opens up, there's some routes that, right now, because we have, our station is at Sycamore, we have several routes that divert to that transit center so people can make that bus-rail connection. Some of those routes won't do, won't be doing that anymore, and it will result in some savings back to us. One example is the Alma School Route, it will no longer divert the one-and-a-half miles round trip, so not diverting that trip will save us nearly $100,000 in our transit budget. The Buzz Route, we're going to adjust slightly so that it does make, right now it stops at the post office, we're going to try to extend that so it connects to the Center Street Light Rail Station, and that's a cost-neutral change. And then in addition, our Prop 400 savings will save about $250,000 a year by not diverting the link service. The link services will now converge into, there's a bus stop, I forget where I met, over here by Jimmy John's, where those bus, that's where those buses will stop and pick up now. One of the proposals we have in the budget that there is no additional funding for, it's, if additional funding comes up, we would like to do this, is the Buzz Route. On the left, or the red, the red outline is the current and existing route, and it goes down around Westwood High School, circles down, or brown, and past Bashes and up into downtown. When we, like, when we do light rail, we're going to extend it into downtown, but we've had some requests to look at extending it to Riverview, so we can make that one-seat connection from downtown to Riverview. To do that additional trip, that would cost us about $100,000 a year, but we wanted to put it out there as, if we can find the additional money, that's something that we'd like to be able to do. And then our activity for this next fiscal year, since light rail seems to be the theme of the day, Central Mesa will open later this year, hopefully sometime this fall. Gilbert Road will begin construction next fiscal year, and we hope to begin our transit advertising program next fiscal year. So with that, if there's any questions on the transit budget, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Prop 400 expires?
2026.
2026, okay, so if there is no Prop 500 or whatever follows Prop 400, and we're relying on 2/3 of our transit budget to come from Prop 400, we just hope that we're, none of us are in office in 2026, I guess, right? So a Prop 500 or some other funding mechanism needs to occur, and we just, I guess there's just speculation at this point as to what that would be, right?
Correct. Transit is one element in Prop 400, Prop 400 also helps fund the freeway improvement projects, like the one currently taking place on the Red Mountain Freeway. It funds some street projects, it funds transportation in general, transit is one element of that.
Right.
So it is important for Mesa that another regional sales tax to help fund, offset some of those costs is passed.
Okay. Great, thank you, Council, any other questions? Thank you, Jody. Next item on our agenda, and it's 5:24, just keeping track of time here, is to hear reports on meetings and our conferences attended.
Police.
Whoa, 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 I'm sorry, a small item like the police, yeah, I apologize.
They did just dress up for show.
No, obviously, the biggest portion of our budget is our Police Department, so let's not overlook that. Thank you, Chief, good to have you here. Apologize for the oversight.
He would be representative of our budget with our personnel.
Right. How many police officers does it take to do a budget presentation? Now, good evening, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to take the opportunity to, I thought this would be a good opportunity to have you guys meet our new executive staff and have them participate in this year's budget presentation. To my left is Assistant Chief Mike Solberg, Assistant Chief Danne Cantrell, Financial Services Administrator Krista York, Assistant Chief Tony Filler, and to my right, Assistant Chief Mike DeVore. Each one will be having a little bit of the presentation today. First thing we want to do is, want to talk about our accomplishments from last year's fiscal year. We're going to highlight the Axon Body Camera System, we're also going to highlight our homicide and reduction, and specifically our clearance rates and homicide, and then we're going to highlight our international accreditation of our crime lab services. So go ahead, and Assistant Chief Filler will discuss the Axon camera system.
Good evening. The Axon Flex Camera is one of our accomplishments. We've really been a forerunner in technology with the department. This technology was kind of born and bred in our backyard, a lot of research was done. We did a comprehensive pilot program of one year with 50 control officers, 50 deployed cameras, a very comprehensive study which has now been advertised both nationally and internationally. It's been presented at the International Association of Chiefs of Police, it's also heavily referenced in the Police Executive Research Forum document, which has been a best practices for law enforcement. So we kind of jumped onto it early, we partnered with ASU, and the results have been a benefit not only to Mesa as far as what we found to be successful, but also our partners abroad to do the research for those considering very significant investment in technology.
Okay. Next slide, I thought we'd highlight a little bit of our investigative impact to violent crime, and highlighted on this slide is our, talking a little bit about our homicide clearance rates. And particular note just to streamline here is, if you look at 2013, clearance rate of 95%, and then an expected clearance rate in 2014, that we expect to be at 93% here shortly. And from sense of perspective, for the FBI national average in 2014, the average nationally is about 62.5%, so it gives you a little idea of the expertise really that we're seeing. And I think I'd talk about four areas that I think are worth mentioning of our investigative approach to the violent crimes. First is the work of our first responders, their community engagement and the trust that they have when they go on scene, and their ability to interact, get information and get cooperation from our community, I think is certainly significant in that first response. Secondly is our regional partnerships, and that's highlighted, I think, by our Fusion Center, which is a regional East Valley partnership that gives us criminal intelligence and information from throughout the East Valley and the ability to connect really throughout the Valley. The third aspect is really the skill and expertise, experience and training of our detectives, and certainly highlighted by our homicide detectives in this particular slide, but indicative of the work by all our investigators. And lastly, I think, is one of the most important elements is our full-service crime lab. That allows us to get quick responses to our evidence and information to our detectives to help further our investigations in a very quick manner, to allow us to hopefully have an impact and get a clearance within a short time before more crimes occur. So I think all of these that I just discussed were certainly illustrated during our recent active shooter incident, and how all those came together very quickly to have an impact during a very tragic incident, so just a little bit about our homicide clearance rates.
Anna?
Our crime lab just recently completed an accreditation, it's the first time that our crime lab has received this international accreditation, and it's really significant because it's the most comprehensive independent review that a crime lab can have, and we went from having to meet only 150 standards at 80% to having to now meet 500 standards at 100% compliance, and so to meet that was incredible for our crime lab. We met all of them actually except 10, and so we've already remedied those, nine through policy, and we just finished the last one, and so we'll be getting that accreditation in May. And what the accreditation does for us, because it is recognized in 147 different countries, is that it gives us more access to federal grant funding, of course, and it increases our participation in federal databases, and it also gives our crime lab personnel who testify at trials, Jodi Arias was one, which was, received international attention as well as our active shooter, but it gives our crime lab personnel that extra recognition and credibility when they're testifying in court.
So those are the areas that we're very proud of for last fiscal year. Looking forward to next fiscal year, what are points of pride for next year that we're going to focus on? First of all, it's going to be our newly-created Community Engagement and Employee Services Bureau, which we'll be talking about in a second. Number two is to enhance our already impressive diversity in recruiting and hiring, and we have some very impressive numbers that we want to build on, and then also enhance our crime reduction strategies for next fiscal year. Assistant Chief Solberg?
Good evening. Our Community Engagement Employee Services Bureau, it's our new bureau that we just created last six weeks ago, and really, the core of that is focusing on the outside, how are we relating to the community, and then focusing internally, how are we improving our employees, our employee services, taking care of them. So a lot of it, we've already been doing, we're going to do a better job of advertising and keeping track of what we're doing in our community outreach between our 10 forums that we have, that we have existed for a few years, but also getting more interaction with the community groups and nonprofits, MOC, NAACP, groups such as that. With our diversity team and with our officers, our crime prevention officers, we hit a lot of those meetings, we'll be hitting more of those meetings and improving that communication. Also, part of my role in the new bureau is the council liaison, making sure we're communicating with council and management on what the needs and where we can improve on. In addition to that, we have a lot of our programs that we've had already, the VIPs, our Citizen Police Academy, where you'll see a focus coming up pretty soon in the summer, we'll have our Explorers, we'll be getting that up and running again. Our, we're working on a youth leadership academy for this summer, and then we're also working on our PAL, the Police Athletic League, that we're, hopefully we'll have up by the fall. So those are some of the immediate things you'll see in addition to what we've already been doing. The, internally, like I said, our, the other part is focusing internally, what are we doing to improve our conditions for our employees. And our employee wellness, our assistance recognition for recognizing the excellent work that our officers and our civilians do, our peer team working on, we're trying to increase our peer team and getting a liaison to work with the city and HR and our employees to work on industrial, walking them through that process, making sure they understand the whole process. In addition to that, we were able to maintain our tuition reimbursement, so continuing to push that, the mentor program, career development, trying to develop our employees, develop our future leaders within the department. With our diversity in recruiting and hiring, starting in the end of 2013 with the Budgets Office Assistance and our hiring and our fiscal, we started really aggressively focusing on trying to reduce the amount of time that we had vacancies with our police officers. It takes at least nine months for our officers from hire to being solo out on the street, so we were trying to reduce the amount of time spent with vacancies on our books. So with the use of the over-hires that we were allowed to do, starting in 2013, and we increased that in 2014, it shortened the amount of time that we had vacancies out on the street, and we've, we're currently reaping the benefits of that with this, with the budget that we're proposing. We'll see a little bit of a slowdown with that adjustment, but come next year, we'll really be needing to continue that aggressive hiring that has got us to the situation where we are now. If we hadn't done this a year and a half ago, we'd be in a much worse situation now with our hiring and our vacancies, so that's really helped us. And the other advancement, as the chief mentioned, is in our diversity. When we compare our last two academy classes compared to the prior five years, our diversity rate has increased from 18% to 40%, so it's significant increase, we're, that's a twofold, we're focusing our recruiting in the right areas, but also when we're in the hiring process, we're taking a deeper look at all of our candidates and making sure we're getting the right people in there, doing follow-up interviews in addition to what we were doing already, making sure that they're actually ready to take on this responsibility and get into the academy. So through that focus, that increased hiring and that focus in the hiring process, getting the right people in the academy, we reap the benefits out of this class that we have now, we've only lost two people, one quit just two weeks ago, and then the other one was an injury, so recycled, so really we've only lost one, which normally we lose at least two to three in the first week, and we're a little over halfway through this academy, so that's very good, it's showing very well for what we've done with our recruiting.
Now I'm going to cover the crime reduction strategies, really the nuts and bolts of what we do. Last year was the first time in quite a while we've been up in Part I crimes, which is the measurement by the federal government that we've embraced here, and we were plus 2% year-to-date for Part I crimes. So I've established a pretty optimistic goal of 5% reduction in Part I crimes based on some strategies that have worked in the past. The last 28 days, we were minus 3% in the city, at the end of March, the numbers will be updated in about another month, we were minus 8, so we're going in the right direction. It's adding a little bit of diversity to how we do business, it's adding foot patrols, it's getting our officers out of the cars, historically there's that safety zone inside the vehicles, it's doing business checks, introducing yourself to our constituents, both at apartment complexes and businesses, so they know who you are before there's a call for service, and to help build that relationship. Line-level members attending community meetings and neighborhood meetings instead of just supervisors. We hope to have some agility with our staffing, so we can free up some officers to do a little bit more community-based activities in their schedules, and we always have to have that targeted crime fighting, so there's policing of the day-to-day accidents, non-criminal events, alarm calls, welfare checks. We have to be... We have to be proactive with those career criminals that are predisposed to wreak havoc on our city when you go to work. So there's that component as well. And really, the nuts and bolts is minimize mistakes and elevate the urgency with our membership a little bit higher, and I think we can accomplish our goal.
Okay, in this last slide, I'm going to cover the actual proposed budget reductions that were outlined by the Budget Office a little while ago. First is the inactivation of 23 vacant sworn positions, which will be a savings of $2.6 million. In 20, as Assistant Chief Solberg mentioned, in 2014, we started the over-hire program to try to shrink that time that officer is hired by the time that they're actually working on the street. And with those over-hires, we've actually been able to shrink that time. And currently, right now, we have 23 vacant positions, and that's where we identified those. In May, we're going to have 31 that are coming out of the academy. So we won't feel the pinch of the deactivation of these 23 probably till the beginning or middle of next year. So we, resource-wise, because we've been able to shrink that training time, we'll be okay this fiscal year, but next year, we're going to have to start looking at where we are for our resources. We also inactivated four vacant civilian positions. The majority of these positions were absorbed with existing resources to take over some of the supervision. That would be the police driving coordinator, which is, a sworn officer has been doing that for the last year anyway. Civilian Investigations Specialist Supervisor, which we utilize existing supervisors to absorb that. Municipal Security Officer that was in our communication center monitoring cameras. Our 911 personnel will be absorbing that duty. And then our traffic coordinator, which was over our photo, safety, and towing, that, those responsibilities will be taken over by the lieutenant who is in that unit too. So we're able to absorb those. $150,000 reduction in savings and fleet by reducing 12 patrol vehicles. We're looking at $90,000 saving in overtime, specifically out of communications and our patrol operations. And then $50,000 reduction in our proactive undercover investigation funding, which is a fancy word for our bi-funds that we use to use in undercover funding. We feel comfortable that we'll be able to absorb that this fiscal year. And then commodities of $55,000 out of our PDIT, out of technology and forensics services. And then one of the innovative things that we did this year, or for next fiscal year, we're going to be implementing a $3 per hour surcharge or administrative charge on our off-duty rates. We're still remaining competitive in the off-duty arena, but we'll be able to bring in, we're estimating $85,000.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Question, will the reduction that we're seeing internationally and nationally in fuel costs, I had heard at some point a number of months ago that your fuel costs are still up, in terms of charges from fleet. What is the current status of that? Are you going to be able to save money along with the rest of us?
You want to mention that? We did not include the fuel savings into our savings because of the potential that fluctuates. We did discuss that in length, and we felt that we didn't want to count on it because mid-year, the numbers could be different, so we did not want to make that a, something that we counted on for the savings.
That would be a citywide revaluation, too, that we can do. And the way we budget for fuel as it charges fleet, we can look at that overall. I think we're going to see some of it in fire? Where else? Oh, it's in fleet. Come and help us out with this, Candace. We are watching this, but it does fluctuate a lot, and we want to be careful not to be hedging fuel prices right now. But go ahead, Candace.
What we've looked at, we've been working with the fleet office, with the fleet department, and what we've looked at, and what a lot of the departments have not included, is fuel savings based on the current prices, because we've been looking at that citywide, and we want to make sure, again, that we can sustain that, that we can sustain that going forward. But one of the things, I think what you're, Mayor and Councilmember Kavanaugh, or Vice Mayor Kavanaugh, I think what you're kind of referring to is the overall view, what we were looking at fleet in general, regardless of the current fuel prices, if I'm correct. And we have been working with the fleet department, and we've done reconciliations with the cost going out to the various departments. And they are in line, and we've been working with the department as well. And I think we have a good plan going forward. We have a very transparent system or process for the departments to look at their individual vehicles and ascertain what the costs were for that vehicle, to run that vehicle exactly, so that we can look and see if there's a vehicle that is maybe out of the norm, operating at a higher operational rate than other vehicles, and what contributed to that, and are there factors that we can look at for that. I think what we've seen is that they were, if I'm going to remember correctly, looking at Chris, because we work together on it, is that they're pretty much in line with what we were seeing last year. We're not forecasting any great increases for 1516. We think it'll be stable.
So hopefully no sticker shock, right?
No sticker shock, no sticker shock. So they'll actually have access, we're starting the pilot, sorry, pilot program, we're starting the program now with our March data, and they'll have a couple months in this fiscal year for them to start reviewing the data that they'll receive on a monthly basis. And they'll receive data that'll allow them to see expenses per vehicle, fuel expenses, repair expenses, down to the nut and bolt that was turned on a particular vehicle. And so we'll be working with them for the next few months to make sure that we're giving them the proper data that they need to do the analysis that they need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finter.
I just want to say I'm proud of the Mesa Police Department, all the, you know, all the great things that are occurring, even with the reduced workforce. One observation, since we're under reductions and we're under a very tight time constraint, I'm hoping that you will boldly look in the department and say, what services, by the way, you're one of the most expensive services we provide to the citizens of Mesa, what can we do differently, much along the same lines as the convenience store ordinance? What can we do legislatively that might impact the availability of officers in the field? Are there those less important and less priority calls that can be handled in technology or handled over the phone or different ways to handle it? I've heard a couple of examples, and we don't have time here. I'm hoping that you will feel emboldened to come in with maybe a list and say, through the Public Safety Committee, we need help in, we deliver this service, and we maybe need to rethink how we deliver this service. And I know over the last few years, the stolen cellphone that used to get an officer out making a report is now done over the phone or on the internet or something. I hope you'll boldly do that so we can find some further reductions and free up those officers for officer safety and backup, and some of those most, like the active shooter and others, these officers are doing the really important stuff and take care of some of these less important things in a different way. So that's just an observation.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Just real quick, I apologize for being late, but I was at the Forensics Lab, and I was totally impressed. It's talk about state-of-the-art facility. But I think what I was most impressed was the aggressive searching for grants to pay for some of that very costly equipment. So I hope you continue on that trajectory. I think it's a wise move, but I need to commend Kim for running such a beautiful facility and for your leadership. We have one of the best state-of-the-art forensics labs in the state, so thank you so much.
Mayor and Council, and you're absolutely right. I mean, crime prevention, we've seen our calls for service decline for the last five years. So those things are working, and in tight budget times, those are the things that we need to look at. And then, you know, looking at how the crime lab runs with grants, and, I mean, all those things are very important that we aggressively are going to continue to look at and we have in the past, so thank you for that direction.
Thank you very much. Well, and congratulations to each of you for being our new management team for the Police Department. I hope you feel the full support of the Council. We're behind you. We're excited with our new chief and equally excited with the Assistant Chief, so thank you for the great job you're doing.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. And I'll just give out a quick shout-out to the folks that made Celebrate Mesa success on Saturday. I thought it was great. Anything else, Mr. Kavanaugh?
I just want to comment, I had the privilege to represent the city at Albright's first-ever commencement exercises here in Mesa, so it was a historic moment for their college. It was their 156th year of graduating students from Albright, but the first in Mesa. And so it was a very proud moment for one of our new colleges.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, can you update us on meetings and general information?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So this Saturday, April 25th, from 9 to noon at Rose Jinger High Swimming Pool at 1860 South Longboard, we'll have the free pancakes and surfing, so this is an opportunity to try the FlowRider for free and watch the competition between Mesa's police and fire departments on the FlowRider. So we'll see everybody there. Our next study session will be Thursday, April 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. We do need to get upstairs, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Move in a second, I'll favor the police say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.